This is the Town of Hennessy Board Trustees Regular Meeting, May 14th, 2024, Town Hall. Councilroom at 6:00 PM. Number one, call order, roll call, please.
Randy, Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold. Dave.
Here.
Consider, no, excuse me, report for the Town of Hennessy Agencies.
The pavilion's up.
Yes, it looks wonderful.
Tiffany and I went to the foundation, I don't know what it's called, what's it called? Turkey Strip Foundation.
Turkey Strip Foundation.
And met with them about how we properly do fundraising and create a foundation so it will live on and all those kind of things. So that's one of my new missions is now raise the money to get the concrete under it and continue to build out of that building.
Are you, they're going to have a dedication at this time or would it be later on?
Yeah, right now it's a big mud hole, but if it dries out enough, yeah, we probably will. And then we're going to put up a banner that explains it and, you know, the people that contributed and that. And then when we get farther along, it'll be a permanent, you know, sign and recognition and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Barb, you have anything to add with that?
No, we haven't met.
Okay.
Since last month. Yeah, we won't leave until, I think, September or August, I'm sorry, August.
August.
Yeah.
Do you want to give an update on the car show for this weekend?
It's happening. We're very tired. Yeah, we're going to close the highway at 9:00 AM.
Oh.
And it will remain closed till 6:00 PM. And we're not, we're going to park all the participating cars on the highway this year, so it won't be all scattered everywhere. It will be in one big giant row. And then local cars will be parked in Luke Lauer's parking lot across from the snow cone stand. And then the Memorial Park will be full of vendors of all kinds, links to view and see and things like that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a family emergency, so I'm going to have to leave.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Number three, consider the approval of the consent agenda. A, minutes of the March meeting. B, approval of the claims as follows. April purchase orders, 2,271, 42,271, 74. April RSTF.
It's 22,000.
No. 2,270.
See, I got, there's two.
There's too many twos. So the $2,741.74? What, too many twos?
I'll look.
Okay. Uh, 2,700. That's why I couldn't say the number correctly.
Yeah. I was like, what is the, $2,271.74.
Okay, take out the four.
Yeah.
Okay. And no, RSTF?
No, not for the last part of April.
Okay. May purchase orders, 27,037.96. May RSTF, 22,964.59. Number five, May Cemetery Care, $6,863.57. The May Juvenile Fund is zero. Number seven, May Library Fund, $261.30. Number eight, May Street and Alley Fund, $6,639.67. C, accept the department reports. D, quarterly finance reports from Crawford and Associates. And E, budget amendments from Crawford and Associates. All of that information will be in your packet. I make a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Taken. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Yeah, me too. I know, hmm. So since it's not, is it still approved? I can't remember how that works.
Kind of majority of those present, so it's approved.
Number four, systems comments. Town Administrator Reports, Purchases, and New Employees. Since she had to leave, I'll read that.
Cliff, I got, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Shelley, can I ask you a couple of questions you probably know the answers to? I was expecting to see it on Tiffany's report. What about our automated time clock, clocking in and clocking out? Stuff that we purchased?
I think she's still working on it.
You think she's still working on it?
It's not been added yet, no.
Okay. Uh, I have one more. Okay, thanks, Cliff. That'll be me for now.
Okay. Must be, should have started with that. I did not see it. Did I miss?
It is.
I missed it somewhere.
Let's see, we've got the library, the fire, then you've got Brian's report, and another one Brian, and then there's the water, and then the town administrator.
Okay, there we go. Okay. New Employees, pool staffing is, I'm going to make these names not very well. Juliana Macy's manager, Avery Vendetti, Assistant Manager, Larissa Macy, Assistant Manager, Garrett Vincent, Assistant Manager, Katie Meeker, Life Guard, Bailey Sturgill, sorry about that, Life Guard. You want to read those? Is that Aubrey Johns? Life Guard, Jaden Atkins, Life Guard, Jaren Dow, Life Guard, Miguel Torango, Life Guard. And again, I apologize if I say these names incorrectly. Miley Tool, Life Guard.
Ezmeralda.
Thank you. Cauldron is cashier. Sierra Burz, cashier. Jamie Goff, cashier. Kevin Kimberly, Citizen Transfer Station Dump Attendant. Purchasing was none. Pool above, you will see the individuals we have hired so far. We still have a couple more to interview, conduct. I decided this year to have a cashier on duty who will be in charge of admission and concession sales during the day. They will be responsible for balancing. We have a couple adults who have stepped up on this evening and weekends. The pool is filled and mostly ready to turn on. We have the order for some replacement safety items, as well as new map for the kitty slide. Cemetery and restroom stories, the stone is complete, just waiting for O G and E to connect electricity so we can get the water going. Reef Water Plant Project bid advertisement has been submitted to the newspaper, as well as the bidding agencies. I have attached a copy of the timeline in your information. The state audit, we have not heard anything from the office since the middle of March month. I had a trustee inform me that he had contacted Mr. Morley, who said that the audit report is complete and just waiting on a final approval from the state auditor. This trustee also stated that the town will be notified when the audit is released, and I will notify each of you as soon as we hear anything. Job descriptions, I am attaching several job descriptions that I have signed off on for the attorney. Please review them and let me know if you have any questions or concerns. I will be submitting them for approval at the June meeting. If you can think of anything. And that's her report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I remembered my second question, if you don't mind. It's on this topic.
Okay.
Shelley, I have another question for you, being Tiffany's not here. Do you have any updates on the computer hardware and software that she's working to get for the board?
I do not have that, please.
I'm sorry?
I do not have that.
Thank you. That's it, sir.
I want to add on the new employment. There's three guards that's not on here. Kevin Trillo, Brooklyn Harris, and Emily Goff. So we have 17 total employees for the pool.
Is that what we had last year?
We did. Last year, all 17 were certified lifeguards. This year, three of them are only counter help.
Three or one, I'm sorry?
Just the counter help. They'll help in the concession stand and at the, on the inside.
Thank you, Shelley. Number six, other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take care of action of the following. A, presentation and discussion on the street repair machinery available from the asphalt zipper company by Representative Barry Deal.
I, I put this item on, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, don't get it.
I put this item on, I ran into Barry's company down at the OML conference at, in Oklahoma City back in September. And the way the machinery, the videos that they had and exposed me to the way the machinery works, it really piqued my interest. And since then, I've contacted the company a couple of times. They've contacted me. And I thought it was a good idea to have Barry come in tonight and just do a presentation for you guys to take a look at. We may be able to save some money, and I think Barry's actually going to talk about that. I'm not talking about the oil field stuff and the grant stuff we got going on on cemetery and Mitchell. I got it backwards. Mitchell and cemetery. What I'm talking about is, what I'm thinking about is, is we may have a better way to resurface some streets here in town that are not oil field traffic streets and which are not eligible for the oil field grant money. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So Barry, with that, Barry Deal, thanks for coming, Barry.
Oh, thank y'all.
I appreciate you.
Hey.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you discussed this with a town administrator, the equipment or any of this before putting it on the agenda?
No, actually, I was going to discuss it here tonight in the meeting. I thought that would be the way to do it.
Okay. I can come back.
No.
I was just curious. It's close to home, so it's all right.
Okay.
I didn't get, I put it on the agenda. I didn't get any calls from her or anything like that. I would have been glad to discuss it with her.
Okay. I was just curious.
Well, I hate that she had the family emergency here. I really wanted her to, she's the main one I wanted to see.
Cliff, I noticed for brothers, I noticed you're left-handed.
Yes, sir. My grandmother said we get a free trip to heaven, mother, hell for us here on earth, so.
Oh, son, I like that.
And also, you know, when we were raised, being left-handed is a lot different because they didn't have scissors, they didn't have desks, they didn't have fog gloves, they didn't have nothing. I learned that trick, you know, your hand over it stops. So I got prompted by my physical therapist. So I hold that shoulder replacement. Anyway, thank y'all. I know y'all are busy. I know. I just can ask, real quick, what, what are y'all interested in for your streets in Hennessy? What's important to you? How about that? What's important to you guys?
Been able to, you know, drive safely in town? Be able to not have potholes and?
Okay. And that's what I'm about, is a, you know, more, people sell a pothole patcher, and that's exactly what it is. It's a pothole patcher, which means you put either cold or hot asphalt into a hole, and it's going to last anywhere from three months to two years max. And two years, I was raised in this area. We had more climate changes than you can shake a stick at, which really, the roads expand, they extract, so that's why we get a lot of cracks and stuff like that. That Armageddon, ice storm, they had, you know, was an example. That Enid block right after that, because they had so much work. But I've sold to Enid and Perry lately that are close to you, and they have saved literally, Enid's probably out in the millions, whereas Perry's still, has already saved over $100,000. They already paid for the machine. So feel free to contact them, and I can give them as a reference, because I realize I got skin in the game, they don't. So, but anyway, I was raised in a small town, Hollis, Oklahoma, and you couldn't even get a house built there, you know, because, and we would go out Altus or Wichita Falls, and we're trying to get somebody to there. And it got, you know, when you would build a house with a handed keys, it lost 50% value because they, you know, they had to charge to come out and do it. Same thing with roads. You know, if you get a contractor to come out here, they're going to charge you for mobilization, and they're not going to come out here unless there's money in it, because they're in business. And so what this is about is empowering your town to take care of your potholes and your residential streets and your alleys with two guys. And instead of paying a contract, right now, going right, trying to chip seal out, it's what I'm seeing, free out of the city block, it'd be around 60 to 80 grand for a contractor to come out, if you could get one to come out. And you could do it in-house, in one day, with two guys, and your cost would be 15,000. Okay, so you're talking $50,000 a block that you're saving. Closest one I've got here, that's Savannah, Texas, is right on the border, by Hollis, also an office. And the city manager goes, you know, we have a street tax, we're charging, but we're not fixing the streets. And I were paying, and this has been a long time ago, they were paying about $20,000 a block. And they brought it in-house, and they, their total cost went down to, it's right now, last time I checked, she's at $2,000 to do a chip seal block in one. And that's not resurfacing, that's getting in the base, fixing the problem, making sure the pothole doesn't come back. Because that's our specialty is residential streets and rural roads. But I'm just here to help. And, and the thing is, if you're not, I get it, if you don't want to mess with it, because, but it just takes two guys. And, and the rest of it, I can show you how to do your boxway for your backhoe. I don't know what your relationship is with the county, but lots of times, like I know Beaver County, they, the county and the city work together, and they help each other out. And we did a city block there with a, with a skid steer unit. And it was 330 feet wide by 30 feet, or long by 30 feet wide, and we finished it in three hours. And they had a road that's going to last for 15 years, because we're getting into the base. Because when I was talking about these, they fill up these potholes, but they can't get to the corrosion under them, you know, because it just can't get there. And this, we go in, we cut them up, make it, we get, we cut out the canter.
So does this basically eat up the asphalt that's already there?
Yes, sir.
And then puts back the asphalt? Does it recycle the asphalt that is picking up to put back into?
It recycles that into base.
Into the base?
And then, so then all, you get, you'll actually be, I noticed, I drove through your streets, you have asphalt over your gutter, under curving gutters, and that is, that's just a disaster waiting to happen. Because what happens is, once you go over your gutter, water settles in there, and then you get a freeze day, you get a melt day, you get a freeze day, expands, the water gets in there, trash truck comes through and wipes out your shoulder. And, and trash trucks are huge now. They look like something out of Star Wars compared to what trash trucks were when we were kids.
Right.
And, but you will literally have, you will quit buying material. You will take the truck back to your barn that you can either put in your alleys, it'll be spec-grade material, and all your dirt alleys, you can put in a grate, and it'll look like a paved alley. Because, and I can run you a video. I don't know if you want to be, I don't want to wear you out, because, you know, the whole thing, I can, you know, I'm, I actually, my number one customer are small rural towns, because getting contractors out here is expensive, and they come when they want to, and they finish when they want to. And you can take all that and get rid of it and save hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's just, you know, it's, it's just, I don't know if everybody remembers the Walt Disney cartoon, bring Paul Bunyan and the bad guy with the chainsaw, with the guy out, cut Paul Bunyan because he had a better tool. And it's the same thing. This is just a better tool that helps small towns. Leonard, Texas is right on the Oklahoma border, by Conner, and the guy's name's Woody, which I love, because I love family, or Toy Story. But he, he was smart. When he did the demo, he did the block right by the Baptist Church, which is 1,900 people, is the biggest church in town. And he finished that street in two hours, and then they came and sealed it with four inches of asphalt. Their total cost was $6,000. And that road was a mess. Now they had a beautiful, you know, for $6,000. And you're utilizing your people, because your people are on the payroll, whether, you know, so it's just utilization kind of thing. So there's just story after story after story, and I can get you, Bert, you save money, but you got to want to go that route. And you know, and, you know, it's, but if you're gonna, I, I had a guy in Huntington, Texas, that's 2,000 people, right on the border. His name was Grifith, Milstead, he passed away, but he said something about small towns that always stuck with me. He goes, if you want your small town to really thrive and do well, you got to have two things. You got to have good water, and you got to have good roads. And that's what, how we show people to do it. You'll have beautiful roads for a big fraction of the cost.
Cliff, the video's very short. I recommend you look at it.
I'd like to watch the video. I'd rather do that than y'all listen to me talk, to be honest.
What, and maybe this is covered in the video, but you said this machine takes up the old asphalt.
Yep.
And then you said somebody brings in four inches of asphalt. Does the machine put that asphalt down?
No, you would, you would.
You still have to have a contractor for that?
You do that, or you can rent a lay down machine and do it yourself, which is, I recommend, because you can go to Oklahoma City and rent your machine. And what you do, when you grind up and prep your streets, you don't have to do it one, but you can drive on that street for a month, and it'll be smooth and hard. And so let's say you go do four blocks, then you go rent your machine, and your guys resurface those four machines and take it back. They can do that in two days. And you have no major capital cost. And it's not hard to run a lay down machine. And you can chip seal, or you can asphalt, whichever one you choose. But you have control of it, because I noticed when I drove across your roads, there's a lot of patches where it's kind of rough and stuff. Those roads don't need to be recycled, they just need to be milled off. You just need to mill off two inches and resurface it, and that's it, because there's no base failure. You don't have base failure until you get a pothole. When you start seeing the road sink, and the road, there's a lot of your roads, they just need milling. And all that milling will go back to your barn. And then you just, and when you mill it, the road's still smooth as it can be. People can drive on it. You're in no hurry, because it's, it's still there. And then you can go resurface it when you're ready, and you're going to have beautiful, smooth streets that'll last you forever, because you don't, you don't have base failure or, but you've got bad asphalt. You've got bad, a bad seal job. And that's a lot, what a lot of contractors do, they come in, you get, we call it alligatored up and everything like that. But a lot of that's just because of the mixture and how they laid the asphalt. And lots of times, they hard their labor the day before they come out. And they do, they, they say, okay, come on, we're going to, you're going to lay down this machine, because they can't afford to have these guys on payroll at any time. And, and just so you know, it's not rocket science. And you have some guys that go to college, and they don't want to dig, go down four feet, haul everything off, bring in rock and everything, and spend $2 million or $3 million for a mile of road, and they go buy everything and just haul it off. And it's a head scratcher to me. And that's just the truth. And, but I, I don't want to wear you out, but I had, I showed you a couple of videos, and I'm quick. But there's one that explains, the first one here explains exactly how the process works. It's more of a general one. And then I can give you, I'd like to, my flagship city, Wrighton House in Union, Texas, and they have saved $20 million in six years. That's their numbers, not mine. That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. He went from $90 a square foot, which was using a contractor, he's now down to $12 a square yard. I said foot, it's yard. And that's crazy. And they're having, and he said he would buy another one if he could get a crew, that's the other thing, you know. But two guys, that's all you need. I don't know how much you have in your street department. You've got two men, they can do. So, but let me.
Cliff, if you guys, if you and Bert show any interest in this at all, I'll hook him up with Tiffany and let him show her this stuff again. He can send it to her on her computer by email.
I have really bad news. I don't bother you. So if you say no, I'll, you'll never see me again unless it comes to OML. But if you say yes, and you tell me when to call you, that's when I call you. We won't call you the day before, we won't call you the anytime after. And we might call if we come out and fix the road, and call you and see how it turned out, make sure it's okay. But that's it. I can't stand that. And so I want y'all to know, nobody's going to call you back. Because, or not from us, I don't know about y'all, my, my phone goes off every 15 minutes, and somebody from Grandburg, where I live, and some guy that answered it immediately. It drives me crazy. Anyway, I'm not sure. This is how it works. Let's get this thing going.
When you take a closer look at the most common road problems, such as potholes, cracking, rutting, and shoving, it's generally not the asphalt itself that is to blame, it's the base. However, most common repair methods merely fill in the holes, seal the cracks, or cover it up with an additional layer of asphalt called an overlay. Over time, this accumulation eventually needs to be milled down to make room for yet another overlay. All the while, the real problem of failing or insufficient base is never addressed. So it's just a matter of time, and the holes, cracks, rutting, and shoving reappear in a seemingly never-ending cycle. Eventually, the road may need to be rehabilitated, requiring all of the asphalt and underlying material to be removed, hauled away, and new material to be hauled in, both of which are very costly and time-consuming. Full depth reclamation, which has been around since the 60s, is simply the process of pulverizing an asphalt surface along with all of its holes, cracks, and ruts into a reusable material that is uniformly blended and incorporated into the insufficient or failing base, adding both volume and structure. If even greater stabilization is required, a variety of additives such as gravel, road base, cement, or other stabilizing materials can easily be incorporated. This homogeneous mixture can now be reshaped, and most importantly, recompacted, providing a more stable base. Finally, a new layer of chip seal or asphalt is applied, resulting in a more durable, longer-lasting, and smoother road for a small fraction of the cost of rehabilitation. Full depth reclamation has been proven to be faster, less expensive, and longer-lasting. Rehabilitation projects that would normally take a week or more can be done in as little as one day. Cost savings average 70% or more because of the time saved, as well as from reusing existing materials in place. Best of all, now that you've solved the base problem, not just covered it up, the results will last years longer.
It's just been a complete game changer for us, if there's no other way of putting it. If we didn't have the asphalt zipper, and we didn't even think about doing it that way, we would be spending a lot more money and getting a lot less done. In the past, where we were just pothole patching, you'd patch it, come back in a month or so, you'd patch it again, and you just keep patching, because if the patch held, then something else would fall apart around the patch. So you're constantly working in the same area doing nothing. Well, now, we can go in there, we can have, you know, a block completely tore up, straightened up, get the drainage where it should be, and then repay. up, get the drainage where it should be, and then repave it, we, we won't have to touch that again.
It's for maintenance. I guess that, we go...
For 10 years.
We recently did a, the bicentennial road project, it was a half a mile at 21 feet wide, and we did the entire project in two and a half days, ready for chip seal. Well, that was reclaiming, compacting, grading it back out, putting the crown back in, getting everything ready for chip seal. Had we done that conventionally, how we used to do it on a dig out, that would've been same distance, same width, three and a half, four weeks. For every little material you carried out, you're bringing in new material. So we were able to reuse, reclaim all the material, add a little bit of cement, ready to go.
With our zipper product reclaiming our roads, we have saved well over, through contractor prices, $399,000.
Over what period of time?
Over this one year period. That's including our seal code program, letting it all in-house, because this allows us to do it in-house. Zipper has paid for itself at the end of this year, and we figured 5,000 feet, we'll have paid for that zipper.
Well, the way we used to do these type of projects, we'd have to bring out a big excavator and chunk out all the asphalt, and it would, you know, it would take us, to do this, a job like this, would take us a month and a half to do something like this. We did a job last fall where we only did one lane, and it took us a month to get it completed with chunking out the asphalt, then doing the base work, and coming back and paving, and we just started this project today, and we'll be, we'll be laying down asphalt tomorrow.
That's it. Right. Thank y'all for setting that, because Beber, Oklahoma, they, they have one, and they, they save a fortune. Uh, we're, Bo, 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 just ordered one. Camo, digital camo or black, very important question for you gentlemen.
Camo.
I appreciate that, because you know what, you might be interested, that'll keep you from taking a headshot. What about you, Bert?
Same thing.
What, what will Randy want? Y'all wanted to vote for Randy, even though he ain't here. Camo?
Yes.
Because he's pretty well invisible, so that'll work. You get one? Camo? All right.
Can you put one here, can you put one here for her?
No, I don't like hair, man.
You don't like hair? Thank you. Barry, thanks a lot.
You bet, what, what size would you like, or what type?
A black. Berta, Cliff, between the odds, huh?
No, a black nice, it's very church.
He is willing to come out and do a demo.
Well, demos are free, but I can't go lower than that. I'm holding the line here, guys. Y'all can negotiate all you want, but I'm not going to order for it.
It looks like the equipment was powered by its own engine, is that right?
Oh, well, you, you have to use your backhoe.
Well, I mean, but the grinder...
Oh, yeah, it's self-contained, yes. It's got a, that, when our backhoe unit's the only one like it on the planet, it's got 163 horsepower Cummins engine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's got a Fairfield planetary, everything's made in the United States, and what's good about that, I was always like that, I ran the factory for a while, and I used to work for an old marine in, in Motorola, so we'd try to buy everything American we could. Well, when, now everybody's got it in China, it takes them, I'll give you, Durapatcher, right now, it takes them 13 months to get their, because, I, I'm over a year to get their machine, because it's coming out of China. Ours all come out of the United States.
Nothing's coming out of China now.
What's the, what's the initial cost?
On the machine for you, what you'd be looking at is $216,000, that includes the trailer. However, we finance almost every zipper in the United States through Welch State Bank in Miami, in Welch, Oklahoma, and the payment is $50,000 a year, and you don't have a payment for a year, and then in five years, you own the machine. So, so you do, you do two blocks, you've covered your payment, because that's, and so, and, you know, and, I mean, and then whatever you do that, you're, you're just making a ton of money. And, the whole thing is, but, you're getting, you're fixing the problem, you're not gonna have potholes if you re, if you do the full depth reclamation, and we call it recycling place, if you recycle the place versus dig it up, because, I guarantee you, if they ever get to do roads around here, around you, you watch, they'll dig it up and haul it off. And the reason they do that's because the contractors can charge you more. It's not because they, it's more sense to recycle, and it's faster, and it's the best base you can get. Engineers talk about core density, the most dense core you can get is recycled asphalt, because it's got petroleum, if you bring in lime rock, it's dry, so...
What, uh, well, let me back up just a little bit. One reason that I was a little bit skeptical is because going back probably 10 or 12 years, we bought a machine that you put oil in, and, and rock, it had a wand, and you fill holes.
Yeah, doesn't work.
And I, no, it didn't, and I, we paid, I think, $60,000 for it, I think it was used one time, and we were very fortunate to get it sold at auction. And we took most of the town's money, but I just, you know, and seeing the video, I think helps explain what it's doing. My only concern is, I, I totally agree with preparing that base in that manner, but then I still think we would need to come in and overlay or get a pack or...
Oh, you're gonna have to, but you, if you just contracted the overlay, you're gonna cut your cost in half, and you're not gonna be overlaying a road, you're gonna be overlaying a road that'll stay, so, but...
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of streets in town that need, that, well, they need, they need it pulled up first, yes.
And I want to tell y'all, y'all look at this, I'm gonna assess your, your situation, I'm gonna look at your crew, I'm gonna look at, if I don't think they're gonna use it, I'm not gonna sell it to you, because I'm not gonna sell you yard art, because that doesn't do me any good. So I'm gonna tell you, because I have so many people that come up to me and go, "We just love our asphalt zipper, we just never use it." I go, "Do everything but leadership," you know?
Enid has one, Perry has one.
Yeah, Chris.
So anyway, so what I'll do, if, if, if you got, you know, after you guys have seen this and digested it, I can hook him up, you know, with Tiffany, and get her to see this stuff, and...
Enid has one too, I mean, it's a big city, but they only have a four footer, and they do, they do, but they do a city block in, you know, one day, they love it, so, they have the newer units.
You guys be willing to go that far?
I, I think... I'll come out here, I'm, by the way, the other thing, we're only, I'm only, I only live about four hours from y'all, all our service, we come to you, you don't have to haul it anywhere, our service truck comes here, it's mobile. So, you don't have to work, now, it's got a Cummins engine, if something happens to the engine, you gotta haul it to Oklahoma City, but anything else on the zipper, if we fix it right here in your garage, you don't ever have to do anything. And we're usually there the next day, where you don't have to go worry about sitting in line.
Barry, what about maintenance on the teeth?
Okay, that's, that, okay, that guy right there, that, at the beginning, he does seven miles of residential teeth, or streets a year, he changes his teeth out usually once a year, and that's a cost of about $1,500.
My question, so what's the duty cycle? Because we have like miles of road, not blocks.
Right.
We need work.
Yeah, no, that's what this is made for, but you don't do miles at a time.
Yeah.
Now, but, but it doesn't matter, because, and here's another thing, soon as you cut, while you're cutting it, people can drive on it, nobody gets locked, yeah, blocked in their driveways, you don't get to call it, grandma had to carry groceries two blocks, they can drive on it as soon as you cut. So, it's not like you're shutting down the street. Another thing, mom and pop shops, you know, your merchants, you can put them out of business, if you put a contractor there for two months, you can put them out of business one day, and, and people can drive in and out the whole time you're working on it, no, the road does never, it never gets shut down. You know, now, if you got a busy place, you're gonna want somebody out there to direct traffic, you know, so that your construction guys don't get ran over, unless you don't like them, but, but...
No, we like ours.
Hey, one thing I love about Oklahoma, it says $10,000 fine for hitting the construction workers, I don't know if y'all seen that?
Right.
That's a pretty good deal, if you don't like the guy, that hit, here's my check, didn't like it, $10,000, that's, that's a good deal. But anyway, but, but besides that, school streets, you can do them when school's out. You know, a lot of contractors won't come when school's out, and your phone's gonna blow up if you, if moms can't pick up their kids and they're having to take extra time, Lord help you, those soccer moms is coming at you. But, it's, it's a great deal, it's a great plan, it works, I mean, we, I have over 700 zippers in Oklahoma and Texas, and, and, and they work, and the, and, you know, but you gotta have that, you gotta have the guy that, you know, tells the guy, we're gonna, and if, if that guy doesn't use it, you gotta be willing to say, "And I know it's a small town, I know what it's like being a small town." Okay, you don't have to use it, you'll have to use it if you're gonna work for me.
That guy would be Tiffany.
Yeah. Well, hey, just, that's all you need, is the one strong person. But, but I can tell you this, there's not a better solution for small rural towns. There, I mean, because, man, contractors do not like mobilizing, you come out here, and they, and they have to make money, but they're gonna break it off in you just to come out here. I mean, like, close to 100 grand, just to come out, and, you know, because they have to cover their expenses.
One thing, oh...
Go ahead, no, I'm fine, I'm just blabbing.
One thing I saw in there was adding concrete.
Yeah.
Now, because I'm still struggling a little bit with reworking the base, which I totally understand, and agree that, because you could've filmed that in Hennessy, Oklahoma.
Yeah.
By adding the concrete, will that product set back up?
Yeah, well, you only put on, what you do, before you cut your, your road, you put an inch to half inch of powdered cement on top of the road, and the zipper will mix it all in one path, that's how you stabilize, because that, what that does is that...
And then if you roll it, but you're still gonna have, at some point, have to overlay, right?
Yeah, you're gonna have to overlay it all.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you, you, okay, we cut two blocks, and Union Column, in North Little Rock, and we use lime, because it was, because you can't use cement in the winter, because, you know, it won't, so cement won't cure after it freezes. And it was really cool, we had smoke coming up our thing from that line, but that Armageddon ice storm hit, and they did not get to that, those two blocks for six months, and the guy called me, the engineer goes, "We did it, we had zero base failures," and they were able to sell it after six months, and the road was fine.
Wow.
So, so just, let you, it's, it's not like you've gotta cut it, and, and the road's gonna be really smooth, it's gonna be super smooth after you get through with it. And it, it's not, I mean, it's, it's, you don't have to worry about ruts or anything after it sets up, you can break a hip on it, as my grandmother used to say, you know, it's hard, and, and, but, so you don't, but, you do four to six blocks, go reach a lay down machine, or, or pay the county to do it, the county might do it for you, because they knock it out like that. Bert can deal with the county, I don't know, like, well, it, 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 yeah. I bet they got a chip seal machine, and they'd have to, they got nice, I'd go by their barn. Anyway, yeah, you guys are the best. Well, and they might, but, well, and you know, she couldn't afford it, it just depends on how much money you wanna save, and how many streets you wanna do, because, you know, you can do, if, if you're a contractor, you're talking about conservatively saving 70%.
My question is, so if you hire a contractor just to rip out and relay, what percentage is the rip out versus the overlay? Is it the 70?
It, well, it depends on contractors, but you can find a guy, I mean, Leonard, Texas, that's right on the border, they found a guy to do it for like $6,000, and that, and it was a whole, it was a block. So you can, you can find that guy. You can find that guy that'll do it, and, and not break it off in you. But the whole thing is, if you're not, if you're gonna seal it, because, why would you seal trash, right? Why would you put it on top of trash? Because, guess what, it, it doesn't matter how good your asphalt is, it's gonna fail. Think of a skating rink, it's got two inches of ice on it, and they can drive a 20,000 pound Zamboni on it, and it won't break, because it's got, it's sitting on a good base. And it's the same thing with your asphalt, it's gotta be stabilized and, and not give, because if it gives, it's gonna crack. It doesn't matter if it's concrete, or asphalt, or what, you get movement, and the whole thing is to get spec product, so you can pack it really well, and, and that's what you'll see in the demo, but, and it's, but, but like, you're not gonna just be doing city blocks, this thing is universal, it'll fix your potholes. Maybe you only have, you know, a si, a patch the size of this room, and that's all you need to fix. So it's not just for doing the whole road, it's for all your, it's, it's universal, it, it's not a pothole patcher, it's a pothole fixer. There's a difference, because like, if you spray that in to a pothole, it's, it's gonna be back within, in this weather, it'll be back within a year. If you, if you, if you recycle it, it's good for 10 years. And the whole, that's the whole key, is to fix the road or the patch where it's the next guy's problem, not yours, that road's fixed for the, your, your tenure, you're done, unless you live to be 150, something like that, but, but, and it goes back, guys, what we've always learned, do it right the first time. We all learned that from our dads, and our, you know, in our generation, and, and there is, if you cut corners, you don't follow the recipe, your cake, Barbara, what do you get? A bad cake. So, it's that simple.
It's all the prep work.
Yeah, but anyway...
I sure appreciate it.
Oh, thank y'all so much, thank y'all.
Thank you.
You got a beautiful town, it's like Krieger in Hollis.
Barry, I'll be in touch with you to put you in touch with Ms. Tillman.
Okay.
So she'll help you organize the demo.
And if you guys, whatever, and, whatever y'all want, and if y'all want, I'll send you anybody you wanna call, whatever, and I'll let you know when we're in the area, we're, we're pretty rural out here, so we main, we do, you know, and we're slowly taking over every little town at the time, you know, it's, I don't know if you know who Ann Sullivan is, but that's kinda who I feel like I got a job sometimes, so, if you've read that book, it's been a pleasure. Thank y'all so much.
And I appreciate it, thank you for your time, and thank you for the information, really appreciate it.
You bet, and I can just tell you, I love a small town America, and that's so good.
Appreciate it, so to talk about.
It is, so nice. You guys almost remind me of Mary setting up there.
I don't know if that's a cocklehead or not.
Well, I have a Mayberry hat, so...
Barry, did you take my hats back?
And he's the one...
Yeah, your hat's disappeared.
I bet Chris, I stayed in when I did it, got that road hold up, he goes, "No way," and I walked in...
So he's one of the purchases from you?
Yeah, him and his city manager, I can't remember his name.
That's perfect, thank you, sir.
Chris was an unbeliever, and I came back to, what our son of a son said to us, we sat in, and I go, "So how'd that road hold up?" And he, he's 30 bucks, and threw it up at the table, and he, but he said, he said, "I just have anybody home."
I got the motion.
Well, you got a cousin, so there you go, he's a grown man.
I got it written out already.
I love it when they're honoring, and you, and you win them over, you know?
Yeah. Oh, did you want a camo?
Yeah, I'm good. You good? I'm perfect.
You sure?
Thank you.
All right. Hey, I would talk all night, because I'm socially impaired, I, I, I'm over social, so I'm gonna get out of here, but thank y'all so much, and y'all stay safe.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'll be in touch to get you in touch with her.
Hey, y'all get, pick videos of those tornadoes, send them to me, because I try to get up here and watch them, I know I'm crazy, but I was raised around them, so...
Yeah.
Hold up. See y'all.
Thanks, Barry.
C, discuss with the possible action to approve the purchase of fireworks for the July 4th celebration. In your paperwork, there's a deal there from Rainbow Fireworks for the purchase of $7,561.87. My only question is, is Brian's deal good on his certification being able to set off fireworks?
He is, we went to Kansas last week, and he took his little firecracker school, and he's good to go.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you. Little firecrackers, so he's a little firecracker now?
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here we go. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of fireworks for the 4th of July celebration for the town of Hennessy for $7,561.87.
I'll second that. Go call, please.
David?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
C, discuss with possible action to purchase a six by three foot, no, a 6.3 foot by 16 foot utility trailer, and a three by six foot, 10 foot trailer from Lowe's to carry lawn mowers. There is a bid order in the, I missed it.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Really a question. Well, I'm trying to think how to say this politically correct. I think, I think there are better, more sturdy trailers than Lowe's trailers. I, I totally agree that we need trailers, but I've got a very similar to Lowe's lawnmower trailer, and it's just pretty lively. I, I totally agree that we need trailers, but I've got a very similar to Lowe's lawnmower trailer, and it's, it's pretty lively, in all honesty. It's not, I just, I don't know, it, I'm just wondering what the cost would be, and I wonder how quickly they're needing something. I don't wanna put them off, you know, if it's gonna hinder them doing their jobs, but on the other hand, I'm just wondering if there's maybe a trailer company? I don't know if Justin Cho still sells trailers at all or not.
What about this, Bert? What if we strike the word Lowe's out of the agenda item and approve these trailers? We would need a, we would need a monetary, a dollar figure, wouldn't we, to, to approve them?
Yeah, but, yeah.
See what I'm going with that? We could approve lawnmower trailers.
Up to seven thousand dollars? That's coming on thinking. Seven thousand.
Is that too much for you, seven thousand?
No, let me tell you, you know what I was thinking?
Yes, sir.
Ten?
Ten?
That's what I was thinking.
Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, because you don't have a dollar amount there in the motion, I think you're fine there so long, I think the big thing I'd say is whoever's gonna do the research on it, make sure you focus on state bid pricing, that way you know you're getting the best deal. You know, you're not above any thresholds, of course, at ten thousand, you're not gonna be at any thresholds anyway, but at least that way you know you're getting the best deal.
You wanna make that motion?
I can, yeah. I'm gonna strike the word Lowe's.
Right.
And we're gonna go with ten thousand?
Can I say something else?
Yes.
What if we expect a steel bottom? Because these wood bottom trailers, they don't.
And we're not keeping them indoors either, we're keeping them outdoors.
I know.
And that wood's gonna rot in two years.
I have a wood bottom trailer.
I was just gonna say, I've got a red, I don't know, we call it a garden trailer, it hauls our lawnmowers around, and it sits outside all the time, and I think we've replaced the wood once, and we've had it for, wow, probably ten, eleven years. I mean, it, it probably all depends on what kind of wood you use, if it's treated or not.
Yeah, I use treated wood mine.
These are pretty big mowers.
Yeah, these are.
Let me ask you guys.
I don't know if we can, um, well, I don't, I just, because I don't know if we can get steel bottom trailers for that price, though.
These are.
No, these are wood, I'm sure.
I thought they had a, a mesh.
A treated lumber utility trailer.
Okay, sorry, yes, I see it now.
And this one does say steel mesh, but that's the ramp, I think.
And the ramps on Lowe's are real light.
Yes.
I, I have one, and my little.
What if?
It bends when I load up on it.
Surely we know the welder that would make us a trailer.
Well.
Like Henry? Energy metering systems, uh, I, I took them, my trailer, because it was a wood floor trailer, not the little one I'm talking about, the regular car trailer. Because the wood got bad, and they put a steel floor in it for me. And that worked really well.
The only problem is we don't know how much time we have.
I mean, if it needs to be tomorrow, well, that's true, I mean, do you know?
I just heard David talking, I didn't know.
Weird. You know, I'm glad we got Jared sitting here. Do we even have to call out this, uh, six point three feet by sixteen feet?
I would just.
Can't we just say?
Lawnmower trailer.
Motion to purchase two utility trailers for lawn, uh, two lawnmower utility trailers?
Yes.
That will give, uh, David and that will give Tiffany some flexibility, and, and we just put the cap at ten thousand? Does that make sense?
Yes.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna make the motion, Cliff. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase two lawnmower utility trailers for a capped price of ten thousand dollars or less.
I'll second that, oh, Bert got it. Bert, second.
Okay, I'll write it out here.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Do you know if these trailers need to be very quickly done?
Yes, they do.
Okay, because we was wondering if, to get a more sturdy trailer.
Um, they just need to be for lawnmowers.
We just made a motion.
And those are pretty sturdy. And so Dave and Trainer right now, they don't have enough vehicles for each of them to take a trailer. So they need one where they can haul two mowers, so two guys can go and mow together, and that's why we need the bigger one. And then the smaller one is pretty sturdy too, that they needed to replace one of the others.
Because what we did is, we put you a cap of ten thousand dollars for two, for two trailers? But maybe not with us.
Those are pretty good.
To find.
I mean, and to me, these are things, I could have just went and bought one trailer and been good, and then the next month bought another trailer, but I tried to keep you guys in the loop, but, I mean.
Well, I'd rather see us spend a little extra and get a little more heavy duty, and maybe even a steel bottom, steel floor instead of wood. But it's gonna last us a while, instead of something that's gonna last a couple of years, we'll be doing it again.
We haven't bought a trailer in probably close to ten years. So, I'm just saying, I mean, but.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do whatever you guys say.
Okay, thank you. Number seven, new business, any matter not known, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with the section of three one one dash nine titled two five zero S. Number H is the comments. Number nine, councilperson report. David?
I've got two questions, okay, Ms. Tillman. Tiffany, have you got any, uh, we went over your report already, have you got any updates on the computer hardware and software for the board?
Um, hardware, software.
What we're giving, what do you call it?
You mean the tablets?
Yeah.
I have a quote in them that we're holding off until we can get, because we're working on trying to get Microsoft three sixty-five, which we should have probably within the next two months. Um, and if I get you tablets now, then I'm gonna have to buy Microsoft for each one of them, and then.
Hold off for a better deal, a couple of months in the way, got it?
Yes.
Uh, what was another question I asked you, Shelley?
Oh, yeah, time machine.
Time clock.
Time clock system?
Update on the time clock?
Um, well, when we turned it all in, they have a hundred and twenty days, no, ninety days to, to get us the product, so.
Okay, so we paid in advance, now we're in a waiting period?
Yes.
Okay, got it, so that's just gonna be an update to the CIC software, though, am I right?
Yes, it'll just be a.
An additional suite, or whatever you wanna call it.
Well, it's just, it's, yes, it will actually, it will import into our system and then export.
Okay, I'm hearing basically a delay on that to a waiting delay.
Well, it's, it was in that agreement, that they have so long to supply us with the product.
Thank you, ma'am, that's all I got, Cliff.
Bert? Okay, uh, make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, uh, Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Okay, the Hennessy Trustees Authority Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six p.m., Town Hall Council Room. Number one, call to order, roll call, please.
Randy? Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Here.
Carol? Dave?
Here.
Number two, consider approval of the consent agenda, A, approval amendments of the April meeting, B, approval of the claims as follows. Number one, April purchase orders, one hundred and eighty-five, sixty-four, May purchase orders, ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine, eighty-eight. May meter deposits refunds is zero. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
You thought I was gonna say here, didn't you?
Yeah.
Number three, citizen comments. Discuss, accept, approve, deny, and/or reject any of, take action on the following. Love it. New business, any matter not known, of which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with the section of three one one dash nine, title twenty-five O S. Citizen comments? Councilperson report.
Nothing, sir.
Bert?
Can I add something to my report or the other?
Yes.
Can I do that, Jared, or can I, citizens com, can we go back to citizen comments?
Citizen comments.
I'll be a citizen as a town administrator. Um, for the H U A, the water meters, I think we have like six left. So next month, I will be bringing, um, the water rates to, um, to come and do per gallon. Um, because I know the public's been asking about that too, so I just wanted to put that out there, that we will start, I will propose next month to start billing by the gallon um, instead of by the thousands. I mean, the first thousand, of course, we will have just your, your base rate, which will include a thousand gallons, but after that, it'll be billed by the gallon. That's, that'll be my proposal next month.
Okay, uh, I would like to tell everybody that, uh, the end of June, I'm going to be stepping down as mayor. I'm gonna be stepping down from the, uh, town board, because I'm going to be moving out of town. But, uh, the end of the year is, uh, for Hennessy is the thirtieth of June, and there might be some special, uh, meetings. And I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity for me to be here and be your mayor, and try to, uh, make this a, a better town that I could do, and I really appreciate all the support that I've gotten. And, uh, I'm going to be moving and going to a new chapter in life, and I just wanna say thank you very much for the opportunity for me to be here, and I will be here until June thirtieth, so.
Will you be at the June meeting, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I will be available through the thirtieth of June.
Where are you moving to? He doesn't want to. He didn't want to say.
He don't want companies.
He didn't want any follow-ups.
He didn't want any followers?
Followers.
For that too.
We may all wanna follow, depending on where it is.
I know, right, if it was Colorado or.
How many spare bedrooms did you get?
My ten nights.
Only three. I make a motion to adjourn, second. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.